To leave the executive session, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we leave the executive session.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay the reference invoice upon receipt of documentation discussed during the executive session.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good, good. All right, you have something? Or do you want to just talk to Braden?
Well, I wanted to know if we had a person that owns a law down there that wants to donate it to the fairgrounds.
Yeah, I've talked with Brian about that a little bit and we're, I've been in contact with him, so we're, we're working on it.
Okay.
And that's not on our agenda, so...
No.
No, I just wanted...
But I can reach out to you and let you know what we're going on that if you want to.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
All right. Judge Penrod, did he ever come by?
Never saw him.
Okay, okay. Emma?
Okay, Emma Iannico, Public Information Officer.
Cal Bermanster, Public Management Director. Dylan Edens, Landfill Manager.
We are here to review the latest version of the fact sheet concerning the future options of the McCammon transfer station and determine a path forward on public outreach and a potential public meeting. So, last time we were here, we got some notes from the commissioners about what else they would like to see in the fact sheet. Some of that was the McCammon customer totals from like the past five years, as well as the costs and revenue and subsidized totals from those same past five years, as well as some other minor changes as well. Have you had... I sent that to the agenda request for review before today, so I was curious what you all think of the new changes.
Well, it's not a simple little solution.
It's not.
Right now, we're open just on Saturdays. Two Saturdays or all Saturdays?
All Saturdays.
All Saturdays. And I still have great concerns about depositing the construction debris and the stuff up there. I mean, that's what, that's what brought up the discussion in the first place, was all that stuff up there. So my, my thought and my feeling was, what would it cost us to shut down that part, but still maintain a dump site there? A transfer station? What's your feelings about that?
I think it'd be a good thing. I think that some of the environmental impact stuff could be bad or net not exist at all, but I think that it would probably be in the interest of the county to eliminate some of the higher-risk areas, for sure.
And by the higher-risk area, you mean the construction debris?
Yes.
And so when construction debris is brought in now, what's the process?
Um, it's brought in, it goes through a load inspection. If it passes, then it goes to where it should be deposited and buried. Sometimes you don't know exactly what's in all of the materials. It might look like logs, but it could have chemicals on it, it could have just anything really that you don't know exactly what's in it. So, I would think, especially with our, you know, environmental engineers that are helping us here at the Fort Hall County, or Fort Hall Mine, mine, mineville, excuse me. You just don't really know what you've got until it happens, so... And, you know, over the years, I wasn't there always, he wasn't here always. We don't know what all is in there even, so that's, that's the thing that concerns me the most about it.
So you're doing an inspection?
Mm-hmm.
But to some degree, the inspection doesn't provide any value? Is that what you're saying? That's what it sounds like.
It does, so if it has garbage in it, or if it has something that's not acceptable, we can have them segregate that away and put it in the roll-off that goes to a line cell. But some things, you just don't know if there's...
If you don't know, why wouldn't you just send it to a line cell?
Could, absolutely.
So it sounds like you could have an inspection that determines where it goes. And if something's not sure, you just send it to a line cell and that's the end of that? Everything can stay open the way it is?
It could be, other than what's already there.
So, talking about the inspection, a semi comes in, what do you do?
We wouldn't accept it there, that facility.
This is all smaller, no businesses. Most of the stuff that's gonna be up there is people bringing branches and stuff. In the past, it's been a little lighter on what the restrictions were, so the stuff that's already in there is more questionable. What we've been doing so far is a lot safer. I don't know if you're ever gonna get an inspection that's like 100%, you know what it is, you know? Because they hide things in inside of...
That's my concern. As you say, no businesses, so that means a contractor comes in. You send them to...
They have to go to Pocatello.
Pocatello. Or that's...
This is just Fort Hall residents, no business.
Okay, that's a, that's a different understanding than I had. And then the other part is, how often do you have to load up a dozer, take it down there, cover stuff up and stuff, so, I mean...
At least once a month.
Transporting that type of equipment down there is, that's spendy too.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's another reason I'd almost want to just close down that part of it and just do the transfer part. So, the debris that they put in there, could it just be put in the transfer bins? And not put, not landfill it at all down there, but just transfer?
Yeah, anything that they can't, or that can fit into the, our transfer trailers that they could do.
Including the construction debris? So you could do, make this thing a complete transfer station right now? It would still remain open to the public for everything they're doing currently?
Just transfer.
Yeah, but it's just gonna have, kinda like what's on here, is they're just gonna have a little bit higher prices.
Well, maybe they are, maybe they aren't.
Yeah.
So, so how do you, how do you gauge the pricing?
So it was all hours attributed through our asset management tracking and all equipment hours that were attributed to the McCammon landfill.
Okay.
Yeah, we track everything that's coming from there to up there. That's, that's employees, our truck, any equipment. We track it by the number of the bin, so we know that we have the total amounts of waste coming from there.
Okay, but, but I pull in, and if I have just a pickup load, it's been $5. And now it's going to 10 on this deal.
And those were just kinda ballpark numbers and looking at what the subsidy amount was?
And truck tires, and, I mean, I mean, you have the, have it broke down here.
Yeah, we have...
So, so up to a 10-foot trailer? So I guess what's, what's the minimum? You come in with a pickup and you're piled, you know, four feet above the...
The minimum, I think, on our fee schedule, I don't have that with us.
The minimum was just like a couple of bags.
Yeah, it's like three bags.
Okay.
Just three garbage bags is $5. Anything other than that is, is based on the size of the trailer.
On the $21 and the $16. So, do you give everyone a receipt?
Yeah, everybody that wants one, yes.
And, and that's, one of the emails that we got said, these guys are just sticking the money in their pockets and not, no receipts, no nothing. So how do we, how do we protect that? Or how are we protecting that? If you're saying that everybody's not getting a receipt, how do we know?
Well, they offer...
Yeah, we don't, we offer a receipt to everybody, but we do an internal and a separate count sheet for customers that come in. So we do offer some free services down there, like recycling. We still count those people that go to the recycling area and the metal area and things like that.
The best we have is, how it kinda works is we come out to each vehicle, check what their load, check, inspect their load, see the size of it based on what it's gonna cost. Then when they fill that out, they get a copy if they want it, if they wanna throw it away, whatever they do, and then we keep a copy. But without having scales down there, we, we, what our check is, is we look at how many people came in and what they, you know, because it says if it was a, size of trailer or size of truck. We look at that versus what that weighed as it came into Pocatello, but there's no exact science of...
But there is a log. That, that's my question. Like I said, when I come across the email, you gotta ask the question if somebody else asked it.
That's another, the 100% say that somebody doesn't, hasn't done that or something, pocketed it? We don't have cameras or something to watch that, but we try to base it off of what our, you know, if we're seeing 34 trucks every Saturday and then one employee goes down there and it's 10, we're kinda questioning what's going on.
The same amount of weight? Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're logging and giving a receipt. But...
So, jumping back to this thing about putting everything in the containers and so on, hauling it up here. To the public, is there any change? I mean, they're basically coming up there, they're getting rid of their trash. Is there any change for them in what their, in their interaction with you guys? They're bringing their trash and they're leaving. So whether you have put it in the landfill or put it in these trailers or whatever, it doesn't make any difference to them at all, right?
Cost.
So there's really, so basically, the operation from the public's point of view is the same. They're bringing their trash there, you're taking care of it, and they're leaving. What you do with it after that, there's really no reason to go down there and tell them anything about what we're doing with it, because there's no difference to them.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
It, it's just cost. There's a lower fee for construction versus going into the containers that come to Pocatello.
Well, we haven't discussed the cost yet and what the cost ought to be.
But that would be to them, that's what they would be...
But since we're on cost, let me just jump to another question here. Is the cost contingent on, would the cost be lower if there were more people utilizing the facility? So this cost is based on the amount of use. So if you increase the use, the cost would come back down, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how this landfill works, that's how all landfills is, is...
So let's clarify that a little bit. The only reduction in cost would be the man-hours, because you're gonna have to haul. There's not a reduction in hauling, there's not a reduction in fuel, because you're still gonna have, you're actually gonna haul more if you have more people. So I don't know if there is a reduction or an equal cost, even if more people do it, because we're gonna haul more trucks, which means we're, we're spending more on fuel. It just means that we're utilizing the hours of the person down there better.
There's gonna be a break-even point. So if you can maximize the, the truck and fill the truck, then you might see some savings. But then say you have overflow of the truck that might just be a little bit, then you're gonna have more save, more costs, so...
Yeah, that works better on the ones that you are actually disposing at site. So, if you have more waste coming in and you have to haul a dozer down there once a month and you got more waste that, for that couple hours that he's smoothing out and covering, it paid more for that dozer going down there. So you're saving money, like Pocatello here, the Fort Hall Mine. If we have to have a compactor and a dozer and a water truck, if we have to have them machines for 100 ton a day and we, and them, that equipment can handle 200 ton a day, that's where we're saving the money. The more waste in, until you have to do another break of more equipment or more employees, that's, you're saving money.
So, these are kinda guesses, these numbers that you have here, kind of estimates at the moment. So we, I would say we don't really know definitively whether it's cheaper just to dump everything there and take a dozer down there or to haul everything up to Pocatello. Do we know that already? Or we don't know it? So if you increased, in other words, if you, if you're only gonna bring a dozer down there and it's gonna, no matter how much trash is there, it's gonna be able to handle it, and you're only doing that, how often do you take a dozer down there?
Once a month.
Once a month. So if you're only doing that once a month, as opposed to hauling all these trailers back and forth, what's cheaper? And in that, in the case...
Okay, I'm gonna stop this right here. It's 11 o'clock, and so we have to do our bid opening.
Yeah.
And then we'll finish this discussion.
Okay.
All right. This is Banning County, invitation to bid Winter Road Salt. The bid opening is September 14th, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. Solicitation was invitation to bid to provide and deliver winter road salt to three Banning County locations. The addendum, there is none. Bid bonds, no bid bond is required. The bid opening will read aloud, acknowledge the response from the individual person or businesses, name and bid amount. As a reminder, reading the bid amount does not confirm a bid has been responsive. Further evaluation will be performed to ensure each bid conforms to requirements. Motion will be to accept the bids that submitted and to take them under advisement for legal review and bid compliance. All suppliers who submit a bid will receive notification once a contract has been awarded. Would you go ahead and please open the bids?
You may, you read much faster than my computer will. So it's going to be just a moment. But yes, this, these bids are sealed, so I do need the board's permission to release those. But once I do that, then I'll get to the data page and then Commissioner Crowder will read in the bids.
Yes, please open the bids.
So I'm just gonna go on this on your computer.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's it. And I can get you right to the page.
Yep, all right.
This is always the part of the day where I'm reminded that we were maybe going to do technology upgrades in this room.
Hmm.
Taking its time to find the internet.
And you have the internet on, so it's running here. I got the internet on, as far as I know.
Do you want me to log into a new tab on there? And then we can race them.
So what am I looking for here?
Uh, if you go to banningcounty.us.
Here, I'll just leave this, turn this over to you and you can do whatever you need to do.
Excellent. All right, because mine says it can't be reached. And yours says it's right here. Come on. Just slow down and stop clicking.
Keep scrolling.
Right, but it won't.
It will. You gotta X that thing out.
All right, commissioners, I'm into the page and have released the sealed bids. And now, we'll get to the data. That's a new error.
How many bids did we get?
We did receive two bids, I can see that. So we did ask for prices for three different, delivery to three different locations, as well as if we go to their location and pick up the salt ourselves. So there will be potentially a couple different prices to read. So this, this is the company.
Compass Minerals America.
What was that?
Compass Minerals Americas is the first one. And...
Delivery to any of our locations is that?
Can you expand that column for me, item name?
Oh, this here?
Yeah. Okay, so salt delivered to Road and Bridge, the unit price is 46.8. Salt delivered to Virginia Pit, the price is 46.8. Salt delivered to Philbin Pit, the price is 46.8. Salt no delivery, the price is 24.73. And now we're gonna go to this one?
So if you'll say that one, then I'll jump to it.
So next one is Specialty Construction Supply. And for that one, expand that column for me. Salt delivered to Road and Bridge, the price is 46.95. Salt delivered to Virginia Pit, 46.95. Salt delivered to Philbin Pit, 46.95. Salt no delivery, 23.95. Okay? So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the bids and turn them over to procurement for eval, for their evaluation.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay? All right, thank you. Come back up.
So can I pick up where I left?
Yeah, yes.
All right, so where I, where I left off, I think what I was getting to here is, if you're going down, you're gonna go down once a month, assuming that's the option, that we keep putting trash in there, you're gonna take this bulldozer down there once a month, regardless of how much trash comes in, right? So in that case, you're gonna have more receipts, the more trash brought in from different people, and so there would be a reduction in cost under that scenario? If we, if we increase the number of people bringing trash in?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's construction debris only? Is that right? I'm not scenario, because the only debris they're putting in there is the construction stuff.
The other one's total cost is just our cost to haul it from there to the other place.
What do you mean, the other one?
It's here to Fort Hall.
So we have to haul that, where we came up with that amount, so the...
Okay.
Putting it on the hill is a lower amount because of the lumps, and so if you add more people, that could save you money. But the stuff going into the dumpsters, it's just a charge based on the fuel, manpower to haul it from down south at McCammon to Pocatello, Fort Hall Mine landfill. So, as Chairman's saying, that the more waste, the more it's, more cost. Because we don't haul them half-full. We haul them, you know, it's not gonna change any of that. We only transport them when they're full.
But it, what you were saying there still goes back to my main concern, continuing to landfill anything down there at that other site. That, that's what scares me, is, and, and I would rather have everybody dump all their debris and haul everything down here. You could have two different, bins down there, three different bins, one for construction debris, and, and then the other one for household waste and that kinda stuff. So you're separating them when they come here anyway. But I, I still have a, a great concern about continuing to landfill anything down there.
So there's really, in my mind, at least, three concerns here. One is the environmental, the potential environmental impact of whatever we're doing down there. The second is convenience for residents of South County. And the third is cost to the residents of South County. At least, those are the three things I see.
And, and to go along with that, the cost to the residents of Banning, that, that end of Banning County, they haven't been, we've been $30,000 they've been compensated for. We've, we've...
So when we, when we started, so that goes back to how that, you know, was, went through the timeline, as before, there was no services. So I mean, the cap...
How far back?
It's been quite a while.
Nineties?
Yeah, 30 years.
Okay.
Back about 30 years, because I, I've lived here my whole life and I remember as we went through them stages, but we didn't have like a PSI or, or curbside or anything. And so the county is responsible for the waste throughout the county. So that's when they came in and they started trying to throw dumpsters here and there, and that's when they kinda did the McCammon landfills, tried to figure that out. But now that we have, that we have the ability for services, everybody through the county has that same opportunity to have curbside. If they want more hauled or like how, whether it's Pocatello or wherever, they, they can get a dumpster set out at their house for a major clean. They have all the same options as anywhere else in the county. The only thing is, is they live farther out, which they, everyone picks where we live. And so there is a convenience living closer to the Fort Hall Mine landfill.
So I'll just tell you kinda where I'm leaning. I, I have a concern for everything you're talking about. I've had people say, well, before the landfill was down there, before the transfer station was down there, a lot of our canyons got tires filled up with all kinds of garbage, all kinds... That environmental end of it I'm concerned about. But we do have laws and we can arrest people and make them come clean stuff up. So we have that. But then the, the next deal I come to is the environmental end for the county's responsibility of dumping and covering anything down there in an unlined facility. Just looking at this, and, and I, we're not gonna make a decision today, because I wanna have further discussion when Jeff is, Jeff is here, along that line. But my thoughts are, I don't mind leaving the landfill open every Saturday. All waste would go in either one bin or the other, either construction waste, yard waste, it could go in one and, and then household garbage in the other, just like we separate them up here. And then the other one is, just looking at that, if we increase people coming, so if you dump construction debris, you'd be charged the same rate as household waste, because we're, we're hauling it now.
You could have some cost savings to the county to help counteract that if we did separate it like you say, because it's, if it, if we could separate the construction waste, that's a cheaper disposal fee for here. So as, as we're charging for the fuel and everything, we could put it...
But, but we have to charge more down there. If we, if we have a $30,000 loss every year right now, then we're, then we have to increase the cost. To me...
Because we're just charging, like I say, we're just got that price, we're just trying to stay up with what it costs for us to haul it. to stay up with what it costs for us to haul it. Is that the only?
And just looking at these, I'd go up ten dollars per item, you know, not the, the twenty dollars on the one and the sixteen on the other. I'd just go up, for the first year, I'd go up ten dollars. And then we evaluate next budget year. See, you guys can come in and say, okay, this is, we're either losing money, we're staying even, or if we're making money, we, we gotta come back. And so, but that's, that's just kind of my thoughts, and like I say, we're not gonna make a decision right now, because I want Jeff's input on this also. But what's, what's your feelings?
I like that. I like the, the getting away from the environmental impact aspect of it a bunch, and then just trying to find that, that correct fee set point to try and kind of bring things back to even. I think that that's something that I can live with for sure.
Well, and, and we just signed a bill, and we're gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars plus on a new dozer. I, and I hate hauling it back and forth, putting it on a truck. I mean, anytime you're on the, the interstate or you're hauling something, you take a chance of, of damaging something, and I'd hate to, to me, that's a, that's a risk. If, if we don't have to haul it.
Well, and on the prices, like Commissioner Crowder said, um, with us not being open on, on Wednesdays, that might change that with the fee and make it, because there'll be more people that come, you know, and there, there might be a little difference with that.
Quick question. These numbers that you had were based on it being open two days a week before? So there probably would be.
This was all based up to twenty-two, and we just barely shut down on Wednesdays. So it's Wednesdays in the summer, but we have so limited people that come on Wednesdays that.
So this took into, this thirty thousand dollars took into consideration being open two days a week. So it's probably less than that. If you're just going down one day a week.
Well, maybe, because the, on Wednesdays, we only send one employee down, and if nobody's coming, we don't haul anything, so there's not a lot of change.
But there's some.
There's a little bit, yes.
Yeah, and, um, you know, I agree with Commissioner Moser. I think all three of us need to be here to discuss this before we make any decisions. And I'd really kind of like to get a better handle on what are the real numbers. And maybe there isn't enough data yet to know what the numbers are, because we were operating one way, and while our numbers are based on how we're operating really for the last year, and now we've kind of changed things. So there is gonna be some difference.
We could get that for you for your discussion.
And the ten dollars is about seventeen thousand dollars a year. That's what we'd increase. So we wouldn't even come up to the thirty thousand. Yeah.
And, and another part that we don't kind of show in there on some of it is, is there is some other little expenses that come along with that.
There's some capital improvement things, like the road. The road's needing some pretty serious work and.
So yeah, like, right now, just looking at it the other day, we're gonna have to pave that road going in.
And the other question I have, what would be our obligation if we shut that down? With the EPA and, and that end of stuff, and what would be the cost on that?
Just the closure of it, which is very minimal on a C and D site. So it's just a certain, a couple feet of soil and seeded with drainage.
Okay.
What's the cost? Or do we need to figure that out?
We could, we would do all that work. Um, yeah, I don't know exactly what, what that would be. So pretty much it'd be the square footage of seeding and our equipment and manpower of moving the material.
Manpower, fuel, and seeding. Okay. Anything else now?
No.
I have a question. Um, so originally with the fact sheet, uh, we planned to distribute this to the community, um, and ask for their feedback and what their thoughts were, um, and how, you know, any of these options that we're considering would impact them, and have them email those comments to us. And then we were also considering doing a public meeting on Thursday next week, uh, to kind of go over this. Is that something that you are still interested in?
Cancel the meeting. We won't have a meeting. You never published anything that we was gonna have that meeting. Uh, we want to talk to Jeff till after that anyway. Uh, and until we come up with, with the, what direction we want to go, and with the numbers and stuff, then we'll put something out to the public, in my opinion. But right now, it's still up in the air. I mean, we don't have an answer. So I don't want to put anything out there.
So I.
It's going out right now anyway. This is all public meetings.
Right, of course. But, um, so next week, we can come back when Jeff is here, um, and then determine if we want to, uh, you know, nix some of these options from the fact sheet, et cetera, and if, how much public outreach we want to do.
Yeah. Because I haven't talked to Jeff at all about this, and I don't know. So I'd like his input.
Well, we can get them numbers for you to put on with that.
Yeah, and I wouldn't have another meeting till we have the numbers and the data, and Jeff's here, then we can have another meeting.
We'll just work on that and then get a meeting put together.
All right.
It's not a rush for, so.
Well, and, and you kind of have a standard down right now. I mean, you really, you haven't taken any services away from anybody. So, or not, we haven't.
Not on the McCammon landfill, no.
Yeah. Yeah. We haven't increased any prices. We haven't, and the other parts, so. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Shanda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shanda Crystal, Chief of Crime Officer. And I don't even have to get into a laptop, so it won't take fifteen minutes. Uh, Commissioner Moser, I did also reach out to Judge Penrod's clerk to try to just see if there was some delay or if he would be able to meet with you. I haven't heard back from her. So I'm guessing something must have come up in there.
Well, that's good. I, I wouldn't mind Jeff being here when he, he's, I got to go to his, what do you call it?
Investiture.
Swearing investiture. And a nice, nice guy. I just thought it'd be good for him to come and introduce himself to, to us, so we get to know him a little bit better.
Sure.
Uh, Judge Hall was over at breakfast this morning. His wife actually works for United Way.
Uh, regarding the dashboard, on the second one for emergency services, fuel reduction, uh, that's Charity reported back that an MOU amendment request had been submitted to IDL, that she had met with the president of the Lava Ranches Association. She was excited to do the project and had a signature on permission. Um, so then that is moving. Once we hear back from IDL, and we'll, they'll have more information for the board. Regarding the, oh, I assumed I was gonna have this before. I'm sorry, the Road and Bridge sale, uh, it closed, and we opened it. Uh, we got two bids. Uh, it is an invitation to bid, so we'll just make sure that they complied with all of our specifications on there. I will triple-check that with Kyle, and then we'll have her, uh, an award back to the board next week. On the facilities for the courthouse security upgrades, we had a great visit with some vendors last week as they came and had a discussion with our team. Uh, we have Adam McKinney on that. Breeden Clayson is on there, as well as Kathleen Ballard and Dan Kendall is, are the team that met with those people. And we had a great conversation about, uh, making a plan for the county. And so, uh, they are submitting, uh, questions. Uh, we received a couple of questions, and we've got those to legal for review. And then we'll issue an addendum to those questions back out on Friday. And then those proposals are due by the end of the month, and then they'll start, um, I am guessing then the team will meet again after that to kind of go over and digest what. This was just a request for information, so we're looking for the subject matter experts in the field to tell us what's available and what like-sized counties out there might be doing, um, where the industry as a whole is heading. And so those are the types of questions that we ask. Specifically, they are looking for, um, different upgrades here to this campus, but there was slightly a broader question about the Bannan County locations as a whole. And so they have a, quite a wide variety of information that we've requested there to look and review and, and make a plan on. The last one, I just want to touch bases, the second from the bottom, the detention center roof. Um, that project has a punch list item that should be completed this week. Uh, if that happens and they're able to make it this week, um, then the warranty should be released. Once that warranty is released to us is when that we'll be able to finally submit that last one. I did warn them that are there, end of the year is approaching, and that there is no money for this project in next year's budget. So they got us a date. Yes. Um, so, and I believe I said that that should work for him, that he was available for that timing. So, um, we do, um, propose that they'll be here at least, um, by tomorrow to finish up that project. As they get that released, we'll get the final invoice for that project and be done. Is there any other questions that I can ask? Thank you.
Nope.